Okay. Good evening, everybody. Before we get started tonight, we are honored to have Pastor Jerry Dockery from Crab Apple First Baptist Church. And if you'll step up and lead us in invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Father, we're thankful for this day that you've given us, and we're just most appreciative for the structure that you have outlined even in your word of how we can organize ourselves to protect one another. And I thank you for this body, for their diligence, their work. And I pray your wisdom upon them. We are most appreciative for their service, and I pray that you would just guide the discussion, that we can continue to be good stewards over what you've entrusted to us. We ask that you would take this meeting, use it for your glory, and that you would edify your people. We ask this prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, here as our call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, August 18th, 2014, to order. Will our city clerk please call roll and make any general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 18th, 2014, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
This evening, we are honored to have the Sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and it's always an honor and a pleasure to have the Sons of the American Revolution here with us tonight. And again, just welcome everybody here. We appreciate you being here. Our city clerk, please call the first item.
Our first item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 14-227.
Okay. Do I have anything on the agenda?
I'd like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Okay. Anything else, Council? Okay, do I have a motion for the agenda with the addition of an executive session on land acquisition?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Kudt, second. Councilmember Longoria, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Any public comment tonight?
We do have three general public comments.
Okay. Right, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who choose to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name, address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, if you would, please call our public comment.
Our first speaker comes from Christine Langlands.
Mayor Lockwood, and Milton City Council, my name is Christine Langlands, and I live at 500 Greenview Terrace in Milton, Georgia. As word is quickly spreading regarding advanced disposals application for expansion to handle municipal waste, our community as a whole is grasping what this will mean to our city: lower property values, difficulty in selling homes, decreased quality in life, and environmental issues stemming from increased vermin, pollution, and wastewater runoff. The City of Milton has been doing a tremendous job and beauty fighting the city thus far as we continue to attract new businesses and homeowners. However, I am personally scared that these efforts will be fruitless, if it is known that waste is being transferred to a location that borders Milton properties and is a half mile from large Milton subdivisions. As our city government, I urge you to spend the time to research the past behavior and applications of advanced disposal to see their intentions and enlist the support of Fulton County and the state of Georgia to protect our community. Now, we have heard from, I have heard from thousands of individuals from all neighboring cities, from Milton, from Alpharetta, from Coming, and not one person, not one person has supported advanced disposals request. And as we continue to grow into this great technology quarter of the South, I would hate it that if one day we look back as a city and say, "We should have done more. We should have put more time into researching the laws and ordinances that are currently in place to protect us. We should have done more." So just to show you how widespread this issue is becoming, two days ago, a piece of paper was taped to my front door, and it said, "Christine, call me," regarding garbage. Carolyn. I didn't know Carolyn. But after calling her, I discovered that she was the one who fought for this area many years ago when Crooked Creek was going to become a waste dump. She was the one who got an amendment passed, the Georgia Solid Waste Management Act, that spoke of protecting counties on both sides of the border. Please refer to Article 2, Chapter 8 of Title 12 of the Official Code of Georgia, known as the Solid Waste Management Act, for further information. And so it can be done. Injunctions can be made, interventions can be filed, to give us enough time to do the necessary research for our community. So I am here today to plead to you to protect our wonderful city, and we will all thank you in return. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next comment comes from David Langlands.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is David Langlands, and I live also at 500 Greenview Terrace here in Milton. And I come before you this evening to discuss an issue I believe should be of great concern to members of this council and to the residents of Milton. The issue I'd like to discuss tonight is related to a property at 57, 5670 and 5680 Shirley Industrial Way in Alpharetta. This is a parcel in Forsyth County that directly abuts Milton and also abuts the Forsyth-Fulton border. The nearest intersections are State Highway 9 and Francis Road, and since early 2012, this property is operated as a recycling collection facility. In October of 2013, the owner, Slade Holdings, applied for a new conditional use permit from Forsyth County that represents a major change in the nature and scope of the processing that they would like to perform on the property. I believe that once the council hears the nature of what is planned for that site, that they too will wish to voice opposition to this conditional use permit. Mayor Lockwood, I'd like to thank you for attending, along with approximately 200 other concerned citizens of Forsyth County and Milton, the town hall that was held by Forsyth Commissioner Todd Levent last Thursday night. In that meeting, we learned the facility has applied to become a materials recovery facility, or MRF. They wish to store, process, and separate solid waste at this facility, which is a conditional use of the zoning that they have already achieved. That is entirely different from the original permitted use of this property. In addition, they wish to expand this facility from 35,000 square feet to 75,000 square feet. It is worth noting that the property already possesses a 20 percent variance in the reduction of the required setback between the current property and Milton. It also possesses a variance of 67 percent in the reduction of the buffer between the property and Milton. It's located approximately 150 feet from the nearest residential Milton lot and adjacent to an active farm and garden for a local restaurant. Forsyth County has three times previously rejected attempts to process solid waste at this facility. By denying a conditional use permit and two separate zoning condition amendments, while we recognize that this property is outside of the jurisdiction of the Milton City Council, the Forsyth Planning Commission and their staff review document has set aside a spot for comments from the City of Milton. On that document, it shows, the current version of that document shows that Milton City Council has yet to provide an official comment or feedback. With all the wonderful things that the council and planning commission have done to sustain and improve the quality of life in Milton, a city I couldn't be happier to call my home, I wanted to urge the council to act on behalf of all of our area's residents in asking for a deeper look into whether or not municipal solid waste has any business being adjacent or within hundreds of yards of homes, farms, and childcare centers. Forsyth Unified Development Code defines a conditional use as a use that would not be appropriate generally or without restriction throughout the zoning district and is not automatically permitted by right within a zoning district. It is for that reason I am thankful this opportunity to speak before the council today, to urge action while the matter is still active before the Forsyth Planning Commission, and to ask the council's help in having Milton residents' strong opposition to this proposal be properly recorded. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sudi, if you'd call the next.
Our next speaker is Natasha Turner.
Good evening, Mayor Lockwood, City Council. My name is Natasha Turner. I reside at 13300 Morris Road. I've been a proud Milton homeowner for over 13 years. Milton's logo is home of the best quality of life in Georgia, and I've experienced that in the past 13 years, have had instances where developers have cut down trees, and Milton has stepped in and said, "You need to replace some trees." I started Smelly Plan regarding the advanced disposal expansion because, as you are all aware, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Some of the facts are that they are going to, if this permit is approved, expand from a recycling center into a 76,550 square foot dirty MRF. That's just one of the facts. I urge you guys to strongly research everything, gather all of the opinions, and all of the accurate facts from the documents that are out there, and just think about the what-ifs. What if this facility is granted, and it continues to grow bigger? There's lots of land available. What if Forsyth County can't properly monitor them? If you've researched the company, they've had a lot of problems with housekeeping and with monitoring. What if it does cause Milton property values to plummet? Is this something that City of Milton is willing to take a risk on? So I just urge you to continue the good works you've done in the City of Milton and properly look into this and give us all a strong voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Tony Rashad.
Good evening. My name is Tony Rashad. I'm a U.S. citizen, and I own a successful business in Alpharetta. In 2005, I've lived at Fairview.
Excuse me, sir. Would you mind at least stating your address for the record also?
13300 Morris Road.
Okay. Thank you.
In 2005, I lived at the Fairview Townhouse subdivision off Morris Road. This was before the City of Milton was put together. I sold that townhouse in 2007 and moved to a much larger and nicer house in Alpharetta, where I lived for the past seven years. I recently moved back, as a coincidence, back to Fairview. In my seven years in Alpharetta, I can't recall ever noticing a regular police checkpoint or a recurring speed trap in my neighborhood. I've only been at Fairview for two weeks, and I can conclusively report that I have not been in and out of my house without seeing one, two, or three police officers at one time, either pulling people over, clocking people, or just parked on the side of the road at the four-way intersection. I'm not the type of person that turns a blind eye to injustice. I grew up in the Middle East and know what a police state looks like firsthand. I have four questions for the city council. First one is, why is the speed limit on Morris Road in the four-lane section 35 miles per hour? And most importantly, why hasn't there been a traffic light installed at the intersection of Morris and Webb Road? The traffic this morning stretched beyond Bethany Bend. It was a problem for me back in 2005, and this remains a problem nine years later. Number two, what percentage of all City of Milton citations were given within half a mile from the Morris Road-Webb Road intersection? And how does that compare to the rest of the city? Because I think it's disproportionate. Is there a deliberate effort from the City of Milton to increase enforcement and targeting of motorists in that area due to the racial and socio-economic blend of people who live there, townhouses, apartment complexes? And if so, why aren't there signs that say, "Speed limits strictly enforced"? Furthermore, who decided this escalation in policing in that area? Number four, when were the traffic ordinances of the City of Milton last updated for that particular area? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our final.
Any more public comment?
We have a final general comment from J.S. Roca.
I think probably it's a done deal, but I wanted to protest.
Ma'am.
Yes. Juanita Roca, and I live at 13770 Brittle Road in Milton.
Thank you.
My neighbor. I wanted to protest what's probably a done deal. It's the commercial enterprise of a kennel that's being built at the corner of Cogburn and Hopewell Roads. My friend has done a lot of research, and you've answered her, but I came to a meeting before when it was on the agenda, and it was pulled and not discussed, and I had been looking since, and it has not been brought up, but the building is already started, the plans, I believe they're variances that have not been adhered to the way I understand them, but have been approved. My complaint says that it's a commercial enterprise in the middle of a residential section. My daughter was interested in purchasing a property across the street, and now she's afraid to because she knows the values of the properties around there will be reduced when you have smelly dogs, I think maybe 50, 80 dogs supposedly inside, but I do know from my own experience that dogs are very noisy, so that noise carries because one dog barks, all the neighborhood dogs are going to bark too. And you also have the problem of waste, its own septic tank, and what about the pollution? All the places around there, I believe, have well water, and they're on a septic tank. So that, what are you going to do about that? Has anybody thought that much in advance of what it's going to do? So there's the noise, the property values, the odors. I never saw a notice posted at all. I go there almost daily. I take care of a property for a friend who lives nearby. I have never seen a notice there. Only one lady told me she thought she saw a notice, but it was so close to the adjoining house that she assumed that the city notice was for the adjoining house and not the property where it's being built. I think those are, it's been approved, but I don't think that it has been thought out well. Anybody who knows dogs knows that one dog barks, all the dogs bark. Kennels are noisy and smelly. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all, sir.
And I would just say this, as I read earlier, public comment is a time for citizens to voice their opinions or concerns, but it's not, at this point, since it's not on our agenda, we don't discuss it back and forth. But I would say both to the comments on the recycle facility in Forsyth or the smelly trash facility, we're certainly looking at that. The gentleman talked about the police officers and this and that certainly opened. If you want to shoot me an email or to the council, I'd be glad to meet with you and discuss that or communicate back and forth, and the same thing on the dog kennel. So, all right, if we want to move on to the consent agenda, Sudi, if you'll read that off.
First item is approval of the July 14th, 2014 city council work session meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14-228. Next, approval of the July 21st, 2014 regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14-229. Next, approval of the financial statements for the period ending July 2014. Agenda item number 14-230. Our fourth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a contract renewal between the City of Milton and AT&amp;T for switched Ethernet services. Agenda item number 14-231.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda as read?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Luss, second by councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that's unanimous. Okay. Move on to reports of presentation. City clerk, please sound the next item.
This is a presentation of a flag certificate to the City of Milton. This is being presented by the Sons of the American Revolution, Piedmont Chapter.
Mayor, city council, citizens of Milton, the Sons of the American Revolution is a patriotic organization. It was our ancestors who brought this country to being. They fought in the Revolutionary War to make this country what it is today. Therefore, patriotism to us is very important. One part of patriotism is the correct display of the American flag. And I have been assured by one of your council members that your flag at Milton is displayed properly. Now, there are several ways to display the flag, and I'm talking about a flag on a pole with a lanyard. One is to put it up in the morning and take it down in the evening. The other is to put it up, have it illuminated, and leave it there 24/7. And I understand this is what you do. Therefore, in recognition of your effort, I would like to present Mayor Lockwood with the certificate of commendation in recognition of exemplary patriotism in the display of the flag of the United States of America. Mayor Lockwood?
I'd like to ask the council.
And city council?
Also, for everybody, we have a little brochure that's called "Your Flag, My Flag, Our Flag," and it tells all about how to stand for and present a flag. That's an honor. Again, it's always an honor to have the Sons of the American Revolution here, and especially honored that they would present that to the city. All right, we are going to move into, we don't have anything on our first presentation or public here, and so we're going to have the city clerk read the zoning rules and sound the first item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and tax amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The planning commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years, immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member, and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of U-1401 VC-1402 14505 Batesville Road by LRF Milton LLC to operate a bed and breakfast, Section 641802, with four guest rooms within an existing home, and a concurrent variance to increase the building setback along Batesville Road from 20 feet to 400 feet, Section 64-11453A. This is Agenda Item Number 14-223. Was brought into first presentation at the August 4th, 2014 regular city council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. First slide shows the, outlined in red, the site for the proposed bed and breakfast.
Mr. Mayor, just before the staff presentation or public here, and so we're going to have
Mr. Mayor, just before the staff presentation continues, I believe we may have a recusal.
Yes.
And what's the reason for that recusal?
Based on my conversation with our city attorney, because I'm adjacent property owner, or my family's adjacent property owner, I will need to recuse myself from this discussion.
Thank you for that, council member. And just to, just to add to what Councilman Thurman just said, typically in the context of land use decisions, if a member of the governing authority does in fact own property that is adjacent to the property that is being zoned or permitted for land use, case law indicates that that council member or board member is deemed to have a substantial interest in that matter for which they can in both indicate an upward increase or decrease in property values, recusal is appropriate.
And in this case, the property is actually owned by a family LLC, but I am the managing member of the LLC, so.
Same, 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 same analysis. Thank you, council member.
Thank you. So, the next slide shows the current zoning, and it's zoned AG one. The twenty-thirty future land use map shows this area. The intention was for it to be agriculture, equestrian, and state residential. This is a copy of the site plan submitted on May twenty-eighth to us. And the, the structure is sort of in the, in the center on the easterly side. Do I have my north hour right? I don't have my north hour right. It's on the, well, it's almost in the center of this. The subject site is zoned AG one agricultural and developed with a ten thousand five hundred square foot, single-family residence and other accessory structures built between nineteen-ten and the present on eighty-point-twelve acres. Based on the applicant's revised site plan submitted to the community development department on May twenty-eighth, staff offers the following considerations. In the applicant's letter of intent received by the community development department, it indicates that the applicant seeks a use permit for bed and breakfast within a ten thousand five hundred square foot house to be in conjunction with a future wedding event facility. Staff notes that the request for the rural event facility use permit will come before the planning commission on October twenty-seventh for review, and only this structure will be utilized as a bed and breakfast and not any of the other buildings on the approximate The site plan meets all of the required development standards for the bed and breakfast use Northwest Fulton Overlay District, based on the fact that the current use is a single-family residence and the request is a non-residential use, the application comes under the purview of the Northwest Fulton Overlay District. The proposed use and development is in conformance with the requirements of the Northwest Fulton Overlay, with the exception of the building setback discussed below. And we are using the Northwest Fulton Overlay because when the application came in, it was at the time that this overlay was still in existence. The applicant is requesting the following concurrent variance, VC fourteen dash oh-two, to increase the building setback along Batesville Road from twenty feet to four hundred feet. Based on the date of application, the proposed use permit for bed and breakfast is required to follow the Northwest Fulton Overlay, as it was written prior to the amendments approved by the mayor and city council on June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. The bed and breakfast is proposed to be within the existing ten thousand five hundred square foot home located approximately four hundred feet from Batesville Road. The Northwest Fulton Overlay District requires non-residential buildings to be located twenty feet from the edge of the required landscape strip or easement. It is staff's opinion that the granting of this variance would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. Secondly, based on the fact that this requirement, if strictly applied, would create an unnecessary hardship because of an extraordinary situation not caused by the applicant based on the location of the structure prior to the adoption of the overlay. Thirdly, relief of granted would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties. Lastly, the public safety, health, and welfare are secured and substantial justice is done. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of VC fourteen dash oh-two. City arborist, he has reviewed the proposed plan, and he feels that the proposed use permit will not impact any specimen trees based on the fact that there will be minimal improvements to the site. The fire marshal has also reviewed it, and he said that the bed and breakfast will be required to be sprinkled and provide handicapped accessibility. The ingress and egress is sufficient for emergency vehicles to provide services to the site. Comments from the public works department include stopping site distance profiles provided, and traffic memo states intersection site distance is adequate. The driveway width and radius returns within the right-of-way do not meet standards. Public involvement, the community zoning information meeting was held on June twenty-fourth, and the applicant was present. It was held at Milton City Hall. There was no one else in attendance at the meeting. The city of Milton Design Review Board courtesy reviewed, held on July eighth. The following comments were made at the meeting, that this is a good use of the property, that proposal fits the rural character of Milton. Public participation planner report, the applicant submitted the public participation report on June twenty-third. The public participation meeting was held on June seventeenth at the proposed site. There were no members of the community to attend the meeting. The planning commission recommendation at their June twenty-third meeting was approval conditional of U fourteen dash oh-one, as well as VC fourteen dash oh-two, with a vote of six to zero. Use permit considerations, the proposed development is located in the agricultural, equestrian, and state residential land use category in the Milton twenty-thirty comp plan. The proposed use permit is permitted in the AG one agricultural district, which is an acceptable zoning district for the AEE land use category. In addition, the following plan policies are consistent with the proposed use. They are, we will encourage the preservation of natural resource areas and preserve contiguous green open space development of land in appropriate designated areas as development occurs. Also, we will encourage development that is sensitive to the overall setting of the community and will contribute to the community's character and sense of place. Two, the subject site is adjacent to the Little River, which is the border between the city of Milton and Cherokee County. To the north and east, there are single-family residential subdivisions with minimum one-acre lots. To the south is the Atlanta National Golf Club. It is staff's opinion that the bed and breakfast is compatible with adjacent nearby properties if it is approved with the recommended conditions. The proposed use is in violation of one requirement of the Northwest Fulton Overlay District. The applicant is requesting a current concurrent variance to come into compliance with the requirement. Four, the type of proposed use's effect on the traffic flow vehicular and pedestrian along adjoining streets should be minimum, as the frequency and timing occurs during off-peak times during the weekend hours, and typically not during the week. The applicant has not indicated hours of operation. Staff makes the assumption that the house will be accessible twenty-four hours a day to serve their guests. Six, the applicant has not indicated any additional lighting on the site. If lighting is proposed, it must comply with the night sky ordinance. Conclusion, if approved with the recommended conditions, the proposed bed and breakfast is consistent with the city of Milton twenty-thirty future land use plan and policies. Therefore, staff recommends U fourteen dash oh-one be approved conditional. Regarding the concurrent variance, staff recommends approval conditional of VC fourteen dash oh-two. Recommended conditions, if this petition is approved by the mayor and city council, it should be approved for a use permit for bed and breakfast conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. A, the existing accessory building shall not be expanded in size as depicted on the site plan received by the community development department on May twenty-eighth. The number of guest rooms shall not exceed four within the ten thousand five hundred thirty-six square foot house depicted on the site plan received by the community development department on May twenty-eighth. To the site plan received by the community development department on May twenty-eighth, said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance, all other applicable city ordinances in these conditions prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit. To provide a four-hundred-foot building setback for the house utilized as bed and breakfast along Batesville Road. Access to the site shall be subject to the approval of the city of Milton Public Works Any questions?
Any questions for Joe?
Kathy, you said this other matter would be coming before us in October, but in your slide deck it said August. I just wanted to make sure we had the right date.
Oh, that was for planning commission, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so it should've.
So, it's August or October?
Yes, that's correct, yes. Thank you for that correction.
Yeah, Kathy, on the last point here, for a, access to the site shall be subject to the approval of the city of Milton Public Works. I drove that access today, and it's quite, quite narrow and winding. What would actually has been proposed by Public Works?
Well, at this point, typically what we would look for are any improvements at the entrance itself. Once they get back onto the site, the entrance would, or the access road would be as they see fit. As long as we can get safe entry and exit from the public right-of-way, that's where we're going to be primarily looking at. And at this point, I've not seen any proposal on it, but typically wouldn't come forward until we get to the development permit stage.
Thank you.
Bill, you're talking about the drive.
The driveway to, to the, to the house.
But from Public Works, you guys would look at the entrance and access to get.
Well, I guess from the fire marshal's standpoint, accessibility for fire equipment, and being four hundred feet off the road, I'm concerned about servicing the facility in the event that there's an emergency.
And I'm sure the fire marshal will have some comments as they move through the process with it, just to make sure that they can get access to the property.
Thank you.
And, and this, this application is separate from the one that's coming forward to us?
That is correct. This is solely for the bed and breakfast. The one coming forward will be a use permit for a rural event facility.
Okay. Anybody else? Mayor?
I guess in the rules, they have to abide within the bed and breakfast, right? They have to live in there, is that what I read? Am I saying that wrong?
Yes.
How do we, how do you monitor that? You know, from that perspective, I was just thinking about it, I mean.
Yeah, well, we have, we will have a business license. They'll have to come in every year, and so we certainly have the ability to send code enforcement out to check to it and make sure that the conditions are being adhered to.
Right.
And then we can withhold the business license, is what we would do.
I was just curious, some of the neighbors were concerned about, you know, that not being self-controlled, if that was the case.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Rip?
And if I understand, then the access is going to be on Batesville Road. It's not Taylor, so we're not changing the access to the house. It's still the existing drive that Bill talked about?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
And then limited just to four, essentially four rooms, guest rooms?
That's right. And I'm sure the applicant can speak to this, but it's our understanding that they will be related to the event facility should that indeed get its use permit eventually.
But we're, tonight, we're only voting on the bed and breakfast portion.
That is correct.
Okay.
Any more questions for staff? We always come back, but good for now. All right, we'll, I'll open up for, first, for those that would like to speak in, in support of this application.
Our first speaker is Rich Kay.
Good evening, Mayor Lockwood, members of the council. My name is Rich Kay. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Taylor English Duma, sixteen-hundred Parkwood Circle, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh-three-three-nine. I'm here today with my clients, that are the owners of the property. They're the trustees of the Julia Mitchell Ivy Trust. I have Sam Ivy and Joe Ivy, who are here with me as well. Several years ago, I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. George Ivy, who has been living at the, the house for approximately sixty years. And I walked the property with him several times during meetings, and one of the things that he desired after he passed was that the house and the, and the farm remained intact. And that, you know, they turned, the trustees would turn the, to turn the property into a bed and breakfast, into an events facility, place for weddings, restaurants, something where the community could come and visit the site and enjoy it, just like he'd enjoyed it for so many years. We have applied for a bed and breakfast, as, as you know. The setback is an interesting point, and prior to the death of Mrs. Ivy, there was a terrible water leak in the property, which destroyed much of the downstairs. The bathtub was left on for about twenty hours, and water just went, went everywhere. And as part of our permitting to do the, the residential renovation, we consulted with Matt Marietta of the Fire Department, and discussed with him and with our builder, Kyle Ingram, who's here as well. You know, our plans, our future plans to develop the site and the house as a bed and breakfast, and if we're going to go ahead and renovate the house anyway, what would we need to do to do that? We went round and round on various aspects of what the, the fire code required, but to address, I think, several of the comments about the four-hundred-foot setback, there really are no fire hydrants. So, whether it's four hundred feet or seventy-five feet, it, it really doesn't come into play like it would in, in the, in the normal commercial ordinance where you want a new commercial business to be within seventy-five feet, so that we can have access. So, there are no fire hydrants with direct access anyway, but what we've done is, we've put together a very expensive well-based sprinkler system. So, we have plenty of water in a separate well that will provide the type of sprinkler system that was required if, in fact, we went forward with the bed and breakfast. When we were doing the renovation work, we made sure that we consulted with Matt to make sure that whatever we did would comply with, with this particular use. So, obviously, the, the sprinkler has not been approved for anything but a residential use, but again, what we've tried to do is do those renovations in contemplation of what we were going to do in the future. This property, and I know that you were there recently, so you've seen, I know some others have come as well, it's eighty acres, it's a beautiful piece of property. And we believe that this use is very consistent with just the overall plan of the city of Milton to, to keep as many rural and pastoral view sheds as possible for the city. From a, from an economic point of view, it's very difficult for a trust who has beneficiaries and such to answer to, to, to maintain that piece of property without it at least paying for itself. And we believe that through the types of special uses that we're seeking, that it will be able to pay for itself, as opposed to subdividing it to, you know, another, another group of subdivisions, which is certainly an option, but it, again, it's not an option that we, we relish or really want to do. We really like, we think that this use fits in very well. The other thing is, and Councilman, you mentioned, how do you police the people living there? They will be living on the grounds. In fact, Mr. Ivy will be married shortly, and their plans are to move, to move there permanently. So, he does live there now, but he and his wife will be living there as well. Again, it's our intent to preserve the nature property and showcase that piece of property, and we really appreciate your support for this special use permit. I was wondering if you all had any questions of us, or?
Tell you what, probably the best thing would be if we cut off the time.
Okay.
And allow other comments, and then we'll certainly welcome you back if you need questions, and we won't count that against you, just, you've got plenty of time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Question? Do we have any other public comment?
Would you, sir?
For our support?
Yes, sir. We have a few to read into the record. I will read those in the record, but we do have one from Mr. Ken Morton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Ken Morton. I live at one-four-seven-three-two Taylor Valley Way in Milton. My name is Ken Morton. I live at 14732 Taylor Valley Way in Milton. My home is located within a few hundred yards of the north side of the Ivy property. I was very pleased to hear that the Ivies wanted to keep the family farm in place, and I support the approval of a bed and breakfast as proposed. This is a much better alternative than having another subdivision, putting even more traffic on Batesville Road seven days a week. The morning traffic, as you know, coming, coming in, commuting from Cherokee County on Batesville Road backs up some mornings almost to Chicken Creek. If we have a landowner that chooses to keep a vast majority of their land in green space, and the council places conditions that prevent further expansion of this bed and breakfast, then I am in complete support. My family's been here in Milton Alpharetta since the 1860s, and I, like most all Milton citizens, want to see such a, see as much preservation as possible. But I also understand that property owners have legal rights to sell or develop their property within the zoning laws that are in place. This bed and breakfast would be a great use for this property.
You have more comment?
I do. I'm going to read these into the record. The first one comes from Candy Anderson, who resides at 110 Taylor Valley Court, Milton, Georgia, 3004. My husband Tim and I live at 110 Taylor Valley Court in Taylor Glen, and wanted to say we support the bed and breakfast only because we don't want to see the farm destroyed and have more houses go up. I love the farm and peaceful living out there and don't want to see any further development. Really, that takes away from the rural living that we love so much. But I really don't want to see another development go up on that beloved farm. Candy Anderson. Next comment comes from Larry Bozey, who resides at 14772 Taylor Valley Way, Milton, Georgia, 3004. Mr. Mayor, City Council and Milton citizens. My name is Larry Bozey, and I live in Milton and in the Taylor Glen neighborhood for over 10 years. As some of you may know, our neighborhood is in close proximity to Little River Farms, LRF. The acreage requesting of rezoning. My entire 10 years in Milton, LRF, has been nothing short of a steward of land and an excellent neighbor. I would strongly support any rezoning requests for this operation and the owners, who have been pillars of our community for years. Thank you for your attention to this matter and the time allowed me. The next comment comes from Tim Anderson, who resides at 110 Taylor Valley Court, Milton, Georgia, 3004. My wife Candy and I live at 110 Taylor Valley Court, which is right next to the proposed bed and breakfast. I wanted to express our support of the bed and breakfast project. Cheers, Tim. And our last comment comes from Keith Crandall, 14700 Taylor Valley Way, Milton, Georgia, 3004. My name is Keith Crandall. My wife Lisa and I live at 14700 Taylor Valley Way. Our property is adjacent to the Ivies, where they are proposing a bed and breakfast. I am out of town on work related to travel, but wanted to express my support of the project. Thank you. And that is all, sir, in support.
Okay. Do we have any, those in speaker court for opposition?
We do not, sir.
Okay, then I'll, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open up for any questions or discussion on the council side, either for staff or for the applicant. First, I just, I'll make a comment. I'm fortunate enough to have a few visits over, meet Mr. Ivy and look at the property. Beautiful piece of property, and I, I do commend the, the Ivy family for trying to fulfill his wishes and also share this beautiful piece. With that, are there any other questions for the applicant or? Not, I'll open up for a vote or a motion.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Bill.
Mayor, I'll move to approve U-14-01, VC-14-02, 14505 Batesville Road by LRF Milton LLC to operate a bed and breakfast, Section 64-1802, with four guest rooms within an existing home and a concurrent variance to increase the building setback along Batesville Road from 20 feet to 400 feet. That's Section 64-11453A, Agenda Item Number 14-223.
We've got a motion and for approval from Councilmember Lusk, a second, from Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous with Councilmember Thurman standing.
I'll just make one comment. I think this is a great example of Americana. Goes back to the early foundings of our country when we had spade coach-ins and similar facilities throughout the colonies here. I commend the family for preserving that tradition and promoting the preservation of this green space in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, thank you. Before I call the next one, it's okay, Ken, just make a general comment. And I, I noticed we had some citizens come in a little bit ago. And I just want to make a comment again that the security and checking everybody out, that is not something that the city is, that's based on a new state law. So that's, for all of you that have to come through and get checked, it's not that the city herself, that's not something that we decided to do or trying to make it more difficult for you to have access in here. But, so I just want to apologize for that, but that is, that is due to, due to a state law, new state law. So appreciate your understanding on that. All right, Suti, if you'll call our next item.
Our next item is consideration of RZ-14-12. To amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form-Based Code, Agenda Item Number 14-224. First presentation was heard at the August 4th, 2014, regular city council meeting, Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the proposed amendments to the Crab Apple Form-Based Code deal essentially with three issues. The first is to change essentially the citations delineating this area as an overlay into one delineating, delineating it as a district. And that was on advice of council that we make that change. Secondly, we, in order to clarify the ability of the city to sell our transfer of development rights to others, the, again, on advice of council, there was a request that we change the definition of transfer of development rights. And you see those changes on page 36. Lastly, and this was staff-generated, this last amendment, is a request to delete the requirement of half-round gutters within the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. Our experience has been that over the past two years, since the adoption of this ordinance, every builder has requested a warrant or variance, if you will, for this requirement. We've made it still an option, but not a requirement. And, and it's placed, staff proposes to allow OG gutters, which are the typical type of gutters installed on homes. And we only make this change into, in the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. So those are the three areas where we would propose amendments to the Crab Apple Code.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments for Kathy on that? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
We do have some public comment.
I'm sorry. Do we have any public comment on that?
We do. We do not have any in support. I have two in opposition. The first one comes from Laura Renshaw.
I'm Laura Renshaw. I live at 1060 Birmingham Road, Milton. I'm coming to speak tonight because this is the only opportunity for public to make a comment about the use of city parkland for this TDR ordinance, the first transaction. So since it's the only opportunity, I'm going to take it because I am opposed to the language being changed because I don't believe it's appropriate for parkland to be used for this particular ordinance. It's, so the most important thing to understand about my concerns about using a city-owned parkland for the TDR is the purpose of a TDR program is to save worthy land within designated extended area that would otherwise become developed. It's particularly appropriate for landowners who don't want to sell their land and see it developed, but have financial pressures to sell. Every review of literature regarding land conservation stresses the success of such a program is directly related to how it is implemented. Community education and support, as well as political will, are critical. Just as Dr. Tom Daniels stated, that he repeated over and over, neighbors, seeing neighbors participating in a program is what will make it successful. Regarding the city's TDR program, the first public education meeting on TDRs was widely acknowledged as a failure. I attended the meeting. I believe that its failure was largely directly related to the lack of community education and buy-in, as well as the speaker was technical, did not relate to the audience. And as a result, many people clearly did not understand the program. It's safe to say that this meeting did not generate needed interest in the program. Now, this first transaction of TDRs is another and a better opportunity for the community buy-in and education. However, staff has chosen to bastardize the program by using city parkland for the transaction. TDRs are supposed to be to keep land conserved and out of the land, out of the hands of developers. And parkland is already both of these things, simply because of its ownership by the city. I suppose you could say that because it's AG1 land, there's no legal reason to keep it from being developed. However, if that was a concern, you would assume that you could actually go on and put a legal voluntary conservation easement, and that would be much more appropriate. The misuse of this ordinance comes from the fact that the ordinance is designed for designated worthy land of conservation that's at risk. And it's mainly designed to be used by private residents within the city. When I first heard about the city's plan in April, I contacted the community development staff responsible for TDRs and explained the need for community education, the importance of the first TDR transaction for publicity, and the need for neighbors to see neighbors complete a TDR transaction in order to trust the process. I offered my own property and sent a, a recent survey of the land to show it has three TDRs available. I stated I would make the transaction as easy as possible to everyone because this opportunity was so important to educate the community. The money is not important to me. The staff person said she would let the director know that I called. I was never contacted about my offer despite my enthusiasm, knowledge, or interest in promoting the program through participation. I also approached Laurel Florio, assuming she was the next person I should talk to related to the city, to talk to her about this issue. And as you know, she's an attorney and conservation expert. Laurel had just been hired by the city. She agreed with all the points I mentioned and offered to look into the situation. Laurel followed up with me and said that while she agrees with me, the city administration had decided that due to the complexity of the transaction, costs involved in valuation, and the city's lack of experience with TDRs, that they were going to conduct the transaction as planned with city parkland. Frankly, this TDR program had a budget of $75,000, so it's really hard for me to understand why staff would not already know every detail of implementation on this transaction. Now, my neighbor Jim Bell, who owns seven to eight acres of lovely pasture between us, has told me he plans to put his land up for sale. I asked him if funds from the TDRs would make a difference in that decision, and he said yes. He's representative of many others, many others in this city that are in the same position. They don't want to sell their land. They don't want it to be developed. They love their land, but financial reasons are forcing them to sell. Developers are the ones who are buying right now, as evidenced by the current population of bulldozers exceeding that of deer in the city right now. I believe part of the rationalization by city staff is that the transaction is just three, three TDRs. Again, this demonstrates a lack of understanding of what that means for land conservation in the community. The money from those three TDRs could help landowners like Jim avoid having to sell his land. It also could save three acres of land along the rural view shed of a large platte that would otherwise become part of a subdivision. Unfortunately, it appears the primary use of this particular transaction is to give the developer the needed density to build the structure that was approved by the council because the public will see no real land conservation to accompany it. The bottom line appears to be that there's a lack of understanding of, number one, the urgency of the situation in the rural areas of the city. Number two, the importance of community support and the success of Milton's land conservation effort. And number three, the role of the TDR program in the city's land conservation program. Thank you.
I do have one to read into the record. This is actually for two items. It is for RZ-14-12 and RZ-14-13, and opposition on both, but it is one comment. It is from Joan Borzalary, who resides at 540 Kings County Court, Milton, Georgia, 3004. I understand that these two items contain references to transfer of development rights. TDRs are meant to be used by private citizens to retain undeveloped land in a rural area while allowing said development in a more high-density part of the city. Parkland owned by the city is already protected from development and should not be part of the equation. That's the end of that comment, and the end of comments in opposition.
Do you have any more?
That's it, sir.
Okay. And I'll open up for a motion.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the city attorney and make sure, and Chris, you could address this, the use of TDRs, okay, is something that isn't done without the council's approval. Is that correct? In other words, no TDR transaction can take place, certainly not from property that's owned by the city without the city council's approval on that.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay?
Yes.
And even TDRs that are out in the wild, that two developers might negotiate between themselves, I think that still has to come before the city council for approval. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Matt?
With regards to the points that were made as well in public comment, just, I know we're, maybe as a point of direction to staff, I know sometimes we think that there's the chicken and the egg syndrome, which comes first to developers or, or those that are selling the TDRs, you know, developers want to buy, people want to sell. I know we've had some with regards to the parkland. I think that was a good thing with regards to actually needing the use of that. But the question was, is, you know, how do we determine a price of other TDRs for citizens that are out there as well that may want to utilize that program? I would just like to encourage staff to try to collect information on interested parties with TDRs and potential prices. It is a free market system. If someone wants to sell a TDR and wants to have a price out there, then when we get a developer interested, we'd be able to have a contact in that regard. And obviously, this is the first one. There's always some hiccups on the first ones, but I think as we go forward, if we have a, a collection of knowledge of people that are willing to sell a TDR for a price, that is, our role is, in essence, the broker to make sure we get that to happen. So chicken and egg syndrome, if there's a lot of supply of TDRs, that may encourage some development from the developer's side in our, in our commercial zones. So just direction.
I've got a question for the city attorney, Emily. Is it possible for the city to buy TDR rights for some of these people that are wanting to sell it? If what we're really, if our real goal is to try to preserve land, what better way to preserve it than for the city to actually buy up the rights and we may, one of these days, sell them to a developer who needs it? But if they're those who will want to sell it, and we want to preserve their land, why can't we buy it?
I don't know that we can't, Councilmember Thurman, but what I would ask of you is, is that I'll look at that question and provide a formal response back to the council citing specifically to the county. That'd be my request.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, if we don't have any other comments or questions, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve RZ-14-12 to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form-Based Code, Agenda Item Number 14-224.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, and a second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Suti, could please call the next item?
Our final zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ-
Our final zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ 1413 to amend Article 20 Deerfield Form-Based Code, Agenda Item Number 14225, first presentation at the August 14th, 2014 Regular City Council Meeting, Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the proposed amendments for the Deerfield Form-Based Code are similar to those for Crab Apple in that we would propose amending the citations that relate to calling this ordinance an overlay and change it instead to a district, and then, secondly, to amend the definition of transfer of development rights. And those would be the two proposed amendments for the Deerfield Form-Based Code.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Kathy on that? We have a public comment?
We do not have any in opposition. The only, I'm sorry, we do have one in opposition that I read into the record that was relative to RZ 1412 and 1413. We do not have any in support.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 14-225.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Coats, a second from Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Let's move on to new business. Sudi, if you would call the items.
First item is consideration of a change order between the City of Milton and Astro Group, Inc. to accept bid alternate number one to install a second synthetic turf field at Bell Memorial Park. Agenda Item Number 14232. We do have one public comment to read into the record.
Okay.
And that is from Mr. Ken Morton, 14732 Taylor Valley Way, Milton, Georgia 3004. And he states, "We desperately need more turf fields. Council, please approve this change order." And that is the end. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you know, this is a follow-up to some discussions that we've had over the past few weeks, particularly Jim's presentation last week on the differences between the synthetic turf and the natural turf fields. Under the current plan for Bell Memorial Park, there are the two rectangular fields. One is currently programmed as a synthetic turf field, and the second is currently programmed as a natural turf field. This change order tonight is for your consideration to convert the second natural turf field over to an artificial turf field, so that we would have two rectangular artificial turf fields. And that's it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Start with questions. Do we have any questions up here? Karen?
It is my understanding that this is what the Parks, our Parks Committee is recommending. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Matt?
I'll just make a comment from, I wasn't here for the meeting, but I saw the presentation later on, and, you know, just from the fact that the park is busting at the seams, it just makes sense. I think we would use both, and if we did them both at the same time, I think that would be more cost-effective long-term, because trying to add one later on has additional costs to it, plus the maintenance of the grass, et cetera. In my perspective, I think it's a win. I would, I'm definitely in support of this.
Okay. All right, then I'll open for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the change order between the City of Milton and Astro Group, Incorporated, to accept bid alternate number one to install a second synthetic turf field at Bell Memorial Park, Agenda Item Number 14232.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, and for approval, and a second from, like, Councilmember Coats. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Sudi, if you would please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of the approval of change order number three to the professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Forside Group, Inc. for the master planning, public involvement, traffic study, and design of Bell Memorial Park. This is Agenda Item Number 14233. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for the support of the change order to build the second synthetic turf field. Concurrent with that change, we will now have to change some of the construction documents, and our engineering and design team, Forside Group, has asked us for an increase to their current contract of $3,900 to affect those changes and be able to get those plans delivered into town and managed to the Astro Group.
On the backup for this agenda item, it's the same as Astro's change order. It's not a change order for Forside.
Excuse me, sir.
Okay, in our backup package here.
Yes, sir.
For this agenda item, change order number three, Forside Group, it's actually the change order for Astro Group, the way I read it.
Bill, I'm looking at the agenda publishing right here, and you are correct. It looks as though just the wrong backup is there. We'll, we'll get the right backup there. Essentially, what the backup will be is a change order in the amount of $3,900 to make new engineered plans, so that we can actually build what you just approved, that you wanted. It takes a different footprint, so that's what you'd be approving if you approved this tonight, and the document would match that.
Sounds like a deal.
Okay. Anything else? Matt will open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14233.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, a second from Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Sudi, if you would please call the next item.
The final item is consideration of a resolution by the City of Milton electing to acquire Providence Park from Fulton County in accord with OCGA 36-31-11.1. This is Agenda Item Number 14234. I do have one public comment from Ms. Laura Renshaw.
Hi, Laura Renshaw, 1060 Birmingham Road, Milton. I'm glad we're purchasing more parkland, so I'm supportive of that. However, I would like the council and the staff to consider putting a conservation easement on this property after it's acquired, so that we don't run into this situation with the TDRs being used, misused, again. We need to realize that we have legal ways to protect parkland. We don't need to use, there's, there's not enough, there's not enough in the receiving area, there's not enough receiving area to meet the sending area acres, if that makes sense. So, there's no reason for us to be using parkland for TDRs. We don't have enough space to receive all the acreage we need to save. You understand? So, this is wrong in about 25,000 ways, okay? So, I hope that you all consider putting a conservation easement on this, so we don't have to have this discussion again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. Karen, any?
Mr. Mayor, as the council, just the resolution, I hope, is, speaks for itself as respect to its content. Under OCGA 363111.1, the City of Milton has the right to elect to acquire, in this instance, parkland that is in fact owned by another jurisdiction, that would be Fulton County. This particular park has been under environmental remediation for years. That environmental remediation is now completed, and what we are bringing to you this evening is a resolution for you to make known your election, that we, in fact, do choose to go ahead and buy down this parkland for the price of $100 per acre in accordance with this state law, and we are making demand that the conveyance occur by no later than October 1st, 2014. I would ask, Chris, to the extent you're still comfortable with that date as to the final, at this point. All right, at this point, we're still good with the October 1st, 2014 date.
Okay. Any questions? Matt?
Well, this is, Fulton County is voting on this next week, right? Or this week, or?
No, this is a, I don't know if Fulton County is going to vote on this or not. This is us simply exercising the right that we have in the code to put them on notice of our intent to acquire. Yes, there has been discussion at Fulton County amongst some of the commissioners that bring up the rhetoric that they brought up before, which is that this is surplus property as opposed to parkland, and we just think that is absolutely, for the same 25,000 reasons, that that's absolutely an inappropriate position to take. And, you know, we're going to send this down there and just ask them to react to it, as opposed to us reacting to their, to them, saying that they're going to make it surplus land.
Bill?
Are we going to make this resolution contingent upon the removal of the monitoring equipment?
You know, they've, they've released that RFP at this point for people to bid on it. When you got ready to make a motion, I was going to ask that somebody include that language in there, which is why Ken asked me about the October the 1st date. The date is still good at this point, and I believe that's still an okay date, but I was going to ask you to make that motion either October the 1st or at such time as the wells and groundwater sampling equipment is removed.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll take a shot in. I'll move to approve a resolution by the City of Milton electing to acquire Providence Park from Fulton County in accord with OCGA 3631-11.1 by October 1st, 2014, or as of the time that the monitoring, hazmat monitoring equipment has been removed from the site.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion for approval. Councilmember Lusk with a second, from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously in support. Next item, we'll move on to reports. Is there anything that council would like to report on?
On Friday, a few of us represented the city in the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge. Jim and Stacy and myself, and Karen took part in it, and Jason, and...
Can I ask the question, though? When you choose to take part, how do you choose between getting ice dumped on you or getting to dump the ice?
Orthopedics, apparently.
Yeah. I wasn't, wasn't sure that dumping ice on my head would be a really good idea right before I went to have an MRI done this week on my shoulder. I thought that could probably set me off to going straight to surgery.
Or may fix the problem, as I said.
Sudi, Mark, Councilmember Thurman, excuse on that one.
She was right there. I think she got a little water on her, but...
I got a lot of water on me.
So, we had fun with that, and, and we're going to also donate as well, and I don't quite know the avenue to how to do that, but I guess if you care to, we can collect that monies and get it to Stacy, since she takes all the money anyway. And we challenged some of our friendly cities, and I don't think, I haven't seen any evidence of their partaking in it, so.
Yet.
Maybe we should rough them up.
It's been more than 24 hours. It's supposed to do in 24 hours.
Oh, then we might need to remind them.
Yeah, second notice, maybe.
Slackers.
Slackers. It was fun. It wasn't that bad.
Thank you for doing that. All right, anybody else, council? All right, I'll move on to staff.
Mayor, council, I've got a couple of staff reports tonight. I'm going to spend a little bit of time with, I think, the more lengthy one first, and then there's a shorter one that I'll follow up with. I owe you a response from the last time we met as to an update after meeting with representatives of advanced, or a representative of advanced disposal, and I'm prepared to give you that update tonight. I met with Marcy Crager earlier today. Councilmember Lusk was there with me, and he can certainly chime in at any point if I get off track, or if you want to just take it, you just let me know. I want to represent tonight that what I'm going to tell you, and that what I'm going to tell, that's going to go on this public record, is simply what she told me as their proposal for the facility that is in Forside County there, that we heard some public comment about earlier tonight. I want to be very careful that I'm not going to, I'm not going to lead you to a place of taking a position with this at this point. I'm going to look for your guidance at the end of what I tell you, as to what you want to do from this point into the future. But with that disclaimer, I want to tell you what she expressed to me was being proposed there. The way that I asked for the information to be related to me, so that I could understand, at least I thought I could understand the information better, was to tell me what operation existed today, and then tell me what operation might exist in the future if what was proposed was approved. And that way, I could draw in my own head the difference between the two, and maybe relate that to the council tonight. So, I'll start by saying, in response to asking the question, what exists today at that facility, the response I got was that it was a, it is a recycling and sorting facility, and that today, and this was an important nuance, that what shows up there is pre-sorted recycled material. And the way it's captured, and it seemed to make sense to me, was that we all have at our houses two trash bins, most of us do, of different colors, and in one you put trash, that we call solid waste trash, and the other you put recycling. Now, if you're anything like me, you probably at some point screw up and put something in the recycling that's not supposed to be there, whether that's an egg carton or yogurt container, or a pizza box, or any of those number of things that my nine-year-old tells me to pull out because it's not recyclable. Those, in essence, will end up leaving your house and ending up at this recycling center, and there has to be some mechanism to remove that trash from what is being packaged into bales to recycle. And that is the function that happens at that location today, is that they remove that bit of, they call it dirty trash, or contaminated trash, remove that, it goes to the landfill, and everything else that is of recyclable quality is baled together and leaves that facility in, in some form or fashion. One thing that was interesting to hear today is that this is a commodities-based, commodities-based market, where, you know, cardboard is valued at one thing one day, and plastic is valued at another and another day, and aluminum, or whatever the materials are, are valued in different ways. And it was indicated that they do their very best, and there was no, there was no shame in suggesting that this was a for-profit company that was in the business to make money. And they would make their money at their ability to do this well, meaning if they needed to have cleaner plastic, or better cardboard, or whatever that was, it was advantageous to their bottom line to have a good product going out the door. That's what was existing, that's what's existing today in that facility. It's indicated that, we hear this municipal waste component being brought to it. That's the nuance, that's the change of what's proposed versus what you would see in the future, if it's, if it's approved. The difference is that the material that ends up at the facility is not pre-sorted, meaning that there's going to be, and I'm going to use this as a, this is an absolute hypothetical, but I want to put just kind of a story to it, so it makes sense. Let's say Verizon across the street was a supplier of a good bit of municipal waste that Advanced Disposal believed had in it a large quantity of material that, rather than going to the landfill, should have been recycled. They would want to bring that on as a customer to bring their now non-sorted waste to their facility, in hopes that they would be able to sort out material that they could make money on and recycle, and keep, rather than 100% of it going to the landfill, if they had 50% of recycled material, 50% would be then, in fact, recycled that they could make money on, and they would then transfer the other 50% to the landfill, thereby reducing what went to the landfill by 50% and increasing their bottom line, because they found recycled material in that municipal waste. So, I asked the question, how do you control for that? How do you all of a sudden end up that all, there's a dumpster doesn't show up, and it's only 30% in there, 20% in there? The response I got was that they would be very selective in who they would allow to come to this facility, simply because, and this was her quote, not mine, that at the end of the day, we don't want to be tired and broke, meaning that this is a for-profit business, so it makes sense for us to choose those customers wisely, so that we have recycled material at the quantity that we can make money that goes out the door, so that we're not taking loads of municipal waste in. That would net 30% when they should be looking towards 70%. It's not, I didn't go too far into their business model, but I tried to capture what they were saying was the difference between the facility as it exists today and what is being proposed. I asked the questions about animals, about smells, about sounds, about those more offensive type things that go along with traditional waste collection. You know, of course, the response I got was that this was a closed facility, and there wouldn't be the sounds, there wouldn't be the smells, and there wouldn't be the animals. I don't, you know, we can, you can draw your own conclusion there, when you put trash, you know, in a play... When you put trash, you know, in a place, it's likely gonna create some of those things. So that really is where the information session started and stopped today, was to figure out that the nuances, the difference between pre-sorted and not sorted, and the quantity that would go in there. Indicated that there would be additional truck traffic, but also indicated that that wouldn't be substantially more than what exists today. Whether that's, wherever you are on that is fine. It did remind, quite candidly, that much of the recycled waste that ends up in that facility comes from the adjoining areas, comes from Milton, comes from Forsyth County and Cherokee County. And what, I was reminded as well that we have a solid waste ordinance that requires our haulers to recycle. So, you know, to some degree, we are causing this recycling effort to occur. And she just wanted to remind us that they had to have someplace for that recycling to go because it was not an option for some of us who have solid waste ordinance. So I throw that out there in the spirit of fairness. It was a great conversation, it was candid, it was cordial. When asked if she would be willing to meet with members of the community, the answer was yes. I don't wanna force that upon you or say that that's a good idea. You know, we need to balance at this point where you all want to be as far as taking a position. If you want to take one, what that position might be. If you want to seek a future meeting in the community with members, you know, so that we have an opportunity to either listen to or help provide information in the community. I mean, it's, I'm really kinda needing some direction. You know, I don't necessarily have to have it tonight. But, you know, we obviously have something that's going in right at our border, and we wanna make sure that we take the position that you all wanna take as the policymakers. I'll be happy to answer questions at this point, I'll probably send you an update.
Yeah, Chris, we had a speaker mention tonight, a state code. And I sent you an email yesterday, I think it was, or this morning, I can't remember which, from Carolyn Pace, who basically referenced the same thing. And, of course, you know, there's, those ordinances are always written, specific ways to manage specific situations. Can you shed any light on the applicability of that particular piece of the state code and in this particular instance?
I can, and after talking with the city attorney earlier today and asking him, and he'd actually started to look into that prior to today, because we knew it existed. I'll let him go into the legal details about it, but we don't believe that's applicable because that waste doesn't land there forever.
Landfill versus...
So it's there, and then it gets sorted and leaves and goes somewhere else. But it would actually, that code is designed to speak to the actual landfill itself because the waste would end up and stay there for forever. So can you...
Yeah, the city manager's accurately portrayed my opinion, and to the extent that I want to, or you'd like to see the actual memorandum, we'd already drafted that even before. Okay, good. So you've got my opinion, but I agree with everything the city manager just said.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we let everybody know exactly what the story was there because, obviously, we've been doing a lot of work on making sure if there's a way to insert ourselves, control, offer our opinion, get in the way of, do whatever it is we needed to do, we were willing to do that. And I just wanna make sure all our citizens understand that we've been working on this for a while.
We haven't, we've even, I wanna take that one step further. We've looked at the site plan and tried to figure out if there was ways that if, for some reason, Forsyth County found fit to approve it, that we could seek something on behalf of the City of Milton so that the site would be less offensive to those that were across our border. If you look at the site design at this point, the request for the addition of the facility is actually further away from Milton's border than the facility that currently exists today. So, you know, we're looking at that too, to see if there's ways that we can seek, you know, additional buffers, or additional noise abatement, or what we could seek on behalf of Milton and its citizens to essentially have whatever Forsyth County might do if they choose to approve it, whatever we could do to mitigate as much of that offensiveness as possible.
And members of the council, if you all will allow me very quickly too, I know that you probably know what I'm about to tell you, but what I'm about to tell you is that I wanted to disclose this at the earliest opportunity. You know I'm the Forsyth County Attorney. Marcy Crager, the representative of Advanced, used to be a board member, and some time ago, she was also a personal client that I helped in a private matter. So just for purposes of the record, I want you to know that. I do not believe I have a conflict yet because candidly, I don't believe the City of Milton and Forsyth County are at adverse purposes at all yet. If we get to that point, I will advise the mayor and take appropriate action with respect to any kind of a waiver that I need to take. Thank you for hearing me out on that.
Bert?
If we're going to, to take a position, when does that need to be done? When are they gonna hear it?
It'll go to the Planning Commission, and that's the one opportunity that they have. We have to be heard in Forsyth County, that's intended to be sometime in September, I believe. We have opportunity to take that position at the September 8th council meeting, or at a special call meeting if all of a sudden there's a need that arises that you really wanna get on the record with something. So we've, we've got some time to continue to, continue to research, to continue to evaluate. There's still opportunity for things to, you know, you know how these things work when you rezone, and facts change by the day. So, you know, we're kinda dealing with the facts we have today.
Bill was next, but before that, to Bert's point, I was gonna ask because attended a meeting the other night, and it's, and talking with the staff, and maybe our staff can communicate with Forsyth County staff, didn't seem real clear on, you know, things were changing, and they didn't have some of the information, and we're looking, it didn't sound like they, you know, definitely had it on their agenda and whatnot. So that would be one thing I would certainly wanna look at before we take action is, you know, what are we actually taking action on? And is, you know, is it definitely coming before them or not, if they decide to change or whatever, so. Bill?
Follow up with Bert's, I just wanna know what the county's schedule was as far as Planning Commission, then full commission.
Yeah, I think they were gonna go back and look at some things and all that, so I'd wanna make sure...
I should be able to find the answer to that question.
I wanna make sure we're on top of the latest and greatest before we make any action. Karen?
I believe, since it is adjacent to the City of Milton, we ought to do similar to what we did when the development was coming in the middle of, in downtown Alpharetta, that was adjacent to a bunch of Milton residents, and try to have a meeting that the Milton residents can attend to try to learn more about it. Because I've heard a lot of conflicting information, and, you know, I'd like to make sure that they understand the facts, we understand the facts, and we're all making decisions based on the same set of facts. So I don't know if there's a way for us to get the Crooked Creek Clubhouse, which isn't too far away from there or something, and invite people to a meeting that we can try to get them to come to, and let the community come to it and hear from all those concerned.
I, and I think that's a great idea, what Councilmember Thurman says, and we've batted around a little bit. But I would wanna make sure that, to be careful because unless we have Forsyth County's staff and some other information representatives, as a City of Milton, we could have a meeting and have all of our residents here, and we could talk about it. But if we're not talking apples to apples, it may be, may do more harm and get misinformation out. So I would request that we really put our heads together and figure out the best way to do that if we do elect to do that.
Joe?
Yeah, I guess to echo what Karen said, I, if we could help at least facilitate that so that our citizens have a voice and a chance to bring the facts out and talk directly with them versus going over there to a meeting, I'd be in favor of that because it is bordering, and then have a chance to ask them questions as well as have them do the formal presentation. Because we are talking about a huge increase, more than double the current size, and I understand what you explained, their intent and what they wanna do is to take unsorted garbage in the hopes of trying to find recyclable things. That is, at least at the first blush, I would think it is gonna increase traffic and noise before we get to abatements, at least have them tell us, tell our citizens really what their plans are and how they would guard against that.
And also, I have heard from some of the citizens that they have not fulfilled their conditions of their initial use permit until recently, or not at all. And so there's a little bit of a lack of trust there. So I think if we can get everybody together, you know, and make, make sure everybody's on the same page, and if it does go through, the conditions are there, and with the timeframe as far as when they will be fulfilled.
Councilwoman Thurman, just for my own edification, is it your vision for this meeting, that there be Forsyth County officials in attendance?
Definitely. I think Forsyth County officials need to be there because they need to hear...
What's being presented.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that was to my point, is I didn't want to do a meeting hosted by the City of Milton and all of us, and everybody talking and think we're on a game plan, and all of a sudden, we're not on the, you know, our facts aren't straight.
I guess we can't make them show up, and my hope would be they would come.
Or possibly the, and also representatives from the applicant there too, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
For sure.
We'll wanna, and, yes, we'll wanna definitely think through that. I'll need to call the county manager and see what, recognizing that they have a process that's occurring right now in Forsyth County that is tracking in accordance with the zoning procedures act to where they have met and fulfilled the public participation meetings that are required as a part of that process. I'm trying to put myself in his shoes. Would I all of a sudden open up and have another public meeting? I'll have to talk to the county manager and see if he's willing to do that.
And you know, that, that was discussed at the meeting that they had in Forsyth County, was, I believe the staff said that, you know, they had already had their public meeting, so their next public meeting would be at the Planning Commission if, if they went forward with it.
I can, I certainly can ask the question and just see what the answer is.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, about, if I was a resident living close by there, excuse me, if they weren't willing to come meet with us, that would make me very suspicious of what their behavior and what they really were trying to do. So I would think the applicant, if he really has good intentions, would be more than happy to meet. And I would hope that Forsyth County would be more than happy to, at least, at least if it isn't the staff, at least some of the elected officials up there would be willing to come.
Maybe I mischaracterized that, and that's not fair, so I don't wanna do that, that I asked that question today of Marcy, and she indicated without any hesitation that she would either come to a meeting that we held, or if we told her that we wanted her to hold a meeting, she would just like seek some guidance as to who to invite to it. But she said absolutely without any question, they'd even be willing to hold them. So I don't wanna paint the applicant as though they have not indicated that they would show up.
So, Joe, just to close the loop on all the questions that got asked from our citizens earlier, there was also a statement about our ability, or Forsyth County's expectation that we provide some type of response in whatever petition or process that they're using. Obviously, we've got a lot of activity going on here, and I'm just assuming, Chris, that all of that will somehow make it into a response that we include, and if invited to include something like that in their process.
There is, and it's in their staff report where they indicate that there's an opportunity for Milton to provide comments. If we provide a comment, we'll be providing a comment which is a policy comment of the council. So if in the next couple of weeks we decide, and this will all happen with interactions and conversations, that we are ready to take a position and what that position is, I'll bring that forward in resolution format, and then that would be attached to the staff report in Forsyth County. So it's held there for our comments, our comments, should we make them, come in the form of a resolution.
Okay.
Bill, Matt?
Were we notified of that point, that there were soliciting comments from us?
Yes.
Matt?
Two questions. I mean, if we were to have some kind of a meeting for our residents prior, how quickly could we put something like that together? And in accordance with, you know, I guess we'd be holding a public meeting if you say that, right? And so that would be over what timeframe?
24 hours.
24 hours, we can do that advertisement?
We'd wanna be, we'd wanna be realistic though, to make it so that people could actually attend.
Right.
And then I guess I would see, I would look to your guidance as to whether or not you thought it would need me during the week, or Saturday afternoon, or, you know, you'd have to tell, tell me what you thought was the best to get the turnout that you were hoping for.
Right. As we talked today, I don't think Crooked Creek Clubhouse would be big enough. So we might need a larger facility to be able to have that because, I mean, we're hearing arguments on both sides on this, quite honestly. So it'd be great for all of our citizens to come down and really hear that more than anything else, so that we can take that position early on, but that, that dialogue is extremely important in this case.
I've got a great relationship with Dr. Spurka, and if we need to seek a location at the high school that's larger, or Stone Creek Church, maybe we could, maybe we'll keep the peace better if we're in a church, I don't know. Maybe I should look to Stone Creek, and if that doesn't work out...
They've held political debates in the church before, so...
Okay, so that, okay. Then, so if all things are equal, I'll look to the cheapest solution.
Yeah, and the only thing, and again, please don't take this wrong, that I'm, you know, I'm totally supporting the fact that we need, you know, to have the discussions and the meetings, but my sense is that the applicant would certainly show up as far as, you know, Forsyth County, as far as their staff, and Chris is gonna reach out, I don't know because, you know, it'd be the same thing if we were having an issue in Milton, that all of a sudden, if a neighboring city decides to have their own meeting and expected our staff to show up and present, I don't know, so I can't answer that. As far as the commissioners, I'm sure the commissioner in that district would probably show up, but again, he's already had his meeting, and lots of Milton citizens were there. It's pretty obvious what the, what the direction is and their concern. So I'm just trying to set the expectations, I don't know how, you know, we can only ask and see. But I just think we just need to be careful. If we have a big, huge meeting, and we're all just sitting there on the same page and cheering,
We have something to say.
You know, is that actual factual or not? So we need to kinda think through who we would, would have. I'm wondering if we should figure out who we can get there and who's willing to come before we advertise the meeting, that's...
It's probably gonna be a, an exercise of the city manager talking to the county manager in Forsyth and seeing sort of what the interest is, and of course, coordinating with Advanced Disposal. This will be, and I think it will be characterized as that, as outside of the process. This would be, this would sort of be outside the process, something that the, candidly, the applicant is, is in favor of doing, wants to do, and we would, we would paint it that way so that it is not otherwise...
It's not a demand.
We, we don't want it to mess with the other process that is already in place.
And the, the reality is, what it will allow us, our citizens a chance to come speak, we at least get a sense, an over, I believe, an overwhelming sense of what our citizens think, and which, you know, may help direct us with our input on their application. Just trying to set expectations on that.
That's, that's a good thing to do. The other staff report I need to bring to your attention tonight, council, relates to a, I've got a map, and I'm gonna walk up and show it to you in just a second. But I wanna give you the background of it so that when I get there, I don't have to do a whole lot of talking. We have a parcel that is in Milton that is as far north and east as you can get in the city, that borders Forsyth County to the, orders Forsyth County to the east. There is a request for the council to consider whether or not we would be willing to allow this 43 acres to be serviced by Forsyth County Water and Sewer. The request comes because at this point, there is no road into these 43 acres that you come to from the City of Milton, meaning you have to leave Milton into Forsyth County to be able to access these 43 acres. It is anticipated to be part of a larger residential development that primarily would be in Forsyth County with only a portion, a very small portion being in Milton. So the request is whether or not you would allow an intergovernmental agreement to extend to just that parcel and extend no further. And extends is the wrong word, and I should be cautious of using that word in Milton. It's already there, it's on the site. It's whether or not you'd allow it to, allow them to hook up to Forsyth County Water and Sewer. So let me just make that point abundantly clear, that it's not an extension of anything, it's just a hookup. But whether or not you'd be willing to allow that with an IGA with Forsyth County. I'm not asking you to vote on it tonight, I just wanna know before I go spend dollars and time and energy getting the IGA written to prepare to be brought back to you. If the concept to you is a non-starter, that's what I'm kinda looking for tonight. And I think that's kinda the direction Ken's looking for as well. So while I walk up, can you...
What, what size of the lots?
I was gonna add that to make, clarify. This, yeah, in no way means that, you know, they would make smaller. We could specify that they're, you know, minimum one acre. Again, the applicant would probably, even if they went to the health department to put septic, they'd say, "No, you can't because there is sewer on the property."
So it wouldn't, wouldn't change it from AG1?
No.
No.
Not asking for a zoning...
Okay, so I'm gonna do some, maybe, you can see as well, it's this, it's this top corner right up here. In order to get to it, you end up coming up Long Street Road, leaving the city, and then getting back into it. So it's a, it's as far up there in the corner as you can get.
I think it makes environmental sense to do something like that.
I'm gonna keep it at one acre lot, but I don't have a problem.
Ken, we could add, even that into the IGA, as a condition of the IGA, if the lot size remained at least an acre.
That, that's right, we could add restriction with respect to the lot, the acreage size, and also some further protections to ensure that it's very, very clear that Forsyth County has no interest in expanding any sort of service area within the City of Milton, which I believe is absolutely the case.
What if it was gonna, if it's Ag 1 now, and the Milton's portion would have to come before us for anything less as a rezoning?
That's right.
So it makes control mechanisms...
And just for purposes of the record, again, I would need to, if in fact we, the City of Milton gives direction to go forward on this deal, I would actually have to bring a conflict waiver back to you on that. to bring a conflict waiver back to you on that as well, uh, because it would be an intergovernmental agreement with Forsyth County, just not my night. So.
Okay. Everybody in general, you know, could look at, okay. All right. Anything else, Chris?
Uh, no, no, sir. That's all.
Okay. We added an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Hold on, hold on. Matt wants to make a comment.
I just want to say it's great having the public comments tonight. You know, we, we do a lot of work up here and having everybody coming up to speak. There's a lot of things that we don't all know and we're trying to learn as far as we go up here, but having everybody come up and give their opinions, um, shows that we're working together to try to achieve solutions and that's the best part about this. So thank you all for coming up tonight.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to adjourn and, uh,
To executive session.
To executive session to discuss land acquisition.
All right, I have a motion, a second to adjourn it to executive discussion, to discuss land acquisition. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Yeah, this is a really quick one. We're going to go right over here to the police room.